Okay, let's call the City Council Regular Meeting to order Tuesday, August 26 at 6:31 PM. Roll call, Kaylee.
Councilmember Darms?
Here.
Councilmember Knight?
Here.
Councilmember Tiamson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Graham?
Here.
Councilmember Stafford is absent. She had to go out of state for a family emergency. And Mayor Marks?
Here. We're all here, except for Ms. Stafford. Okay, the invocation, pledge allegiance, chap office.
Thank you. Always good to be with you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That's a privilege. Thank you. Thank you, Father, for this city. We're grateful for it. We've seen your hand upon it as we were talking earlier, how this city has grown and prospered, and we thank you for that. Continue to bless this city. Continue to watch over and protect this city. And, Father, we thank you. Give wisdom to these men and women as they guide the business of this city, direct their steps, direct their paths. Grant them the wisdom and the understanding and the insight and the creative solutions that they find, that they need at times, Lord, and help them and be with them, encourage them and watch over them. Thank you for our first responders. Again, as we're in here, they're out there, and so we thank you for them. Bless them, protect them and watch over them as they help watch over this city. We give you thanks for your goodness and your kindness and your mercy, and again, we thank you for watching over and keeping this city and blessing this city. We thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, number one, absences. We have none. Number two, presentations and proclamations. Dale Arrington's retirement proclamation. The City of Orange City, Florida proclamation. Whereas since commencing her distinguished career in 1977 as a coordinator for federal and state programs in Volusia County, Dale Arrington has devoted her life to public service, leading with integrity, wisdom and an unwavering commitment to community. And whereas Dale's leadership philosophy centers on empowerment rather than authority, a guiding principle that has defined her management style and inspired her team. Through honesty, intelligence and ethical standards, she has fostered a culture of respect, collaboration and innovation among both staff and citizens. And whereas during her tenure as city manager, Dale provided steadfast guidance to the council, her team and the community, bringing a wealth of knowledge and experience that has served as the foundation for Orange City's growth and prosperity. And whereas, under Dale's stewardship, Orange City achieved remarkable milestones that have enriched the quality of life for its residents, including completion of Phase Two for Mill Lake Park, the creation of Colin's Dream Park at Coleman Park, establishment of the Youth Advisory Council and development of the city's first major community redevelopment agency project, revitalizing Holly Avenue and transitioning the area from septic to sewer systems, significantly benefiting the historic district and the Blue Spring Basin. And whereas Dale's unwavering commitment to cultivating future leaders and her vision for sustainable community focus to growth have left an enduring legacy in Orange City, one that will continue to inspire and shape the community for generations to come. And whereas Dale Arrington's career stands as a testament to the power of service, her leadership defined not by titles but by her tireless efforts to strengthen Orange City's sense of community, prosperity and civic pride. Now therefore, I, Kelly Marks, Mayor of the Orange City, City of Orange City, and on behalf of the City Council, recognize Dale Arrington's commendable service to the citizens of Orange City and express our heartfelt gratitude for her dedication, contributions and commitment throughout her tenure. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Orange City to be affixed on the 26th day of August 2025. Mayor Marks. Want to get a picture? Want to get a picture first?
Sure, whatever you'd like to do.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the retirement wishes and for such a lovely proclamation. It has been a great honor to work here for the last nine and a half years. I've worked for five different councils and for three different mayors, and it has been a blast. I have great memories of each council and each mayor, everybody wanting to accomplish much and getting many things done. And I wish the current council and the current mayor best of luck in your next remaining terms. Way to go. And congratulations to you for being the first female mayor at the helm. It's quite an accomplishment. I also really want to thank all of the citizens that I've had the pleasure of working with. The citizens have often brought tireless energy and sometimes novel approaches on how we should go about accomplishing things. And it is, you know, their good ideas that, and their hard work and their presence that lead us for what we do. And it is this grassroots level that makes me think we have got to continue the fight for strong local government. It is the local governments at this level that make people's day-to-day lives work. And lastly, I want to thank all of the staff members that I have worked with, all the ones that are present and, of course, Christine and Kaylee and Joe, John, and everyone else who is here. You and I may think we're something great, but we're really not. It's the policeman you miss when they don't show up to do their job, or the fireman, or the pothole digger. And it is those people who really are the backbone of our city government and carry it through day by day, year by year. And I have been blessed to work with some of the greatest staff, I think, in the state of Florida, and people who care greatly about their jobs. So I just really want to end by saying, thank you all very much. It has been a joy and a pleasure to get up every morning and come to work and do what I think is very meaningful work that benefits a great many people. As I look out at what's next, I've got to tell you, I feel sort of like a baby planner. Almost 50 years ago, making my first presentation, my knees are knocking just a little, and I'm scared because I've never not had a job since I was a teenager. But I've got to tell you, I'm looking forward to it. And although the fear is like that first planner presentation, I've got to tell you, I'm so looking forward to doing it in blue jeans, you know? Yay! So, thank you all so much. Look forward to the next chapter and really am grateful for the past. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, Dale, thank you for everything. I know that you have really moved the city in almost 10 years, and you're going to be missed. We just, it's going to be a hard restart, but we know you're right down the street, so. At least for a little while, right?
Yeah.
Does anybody else in the council want to make a comment before I go to public comment for this agenda item?
I'd just like to, again, thank you very much for your insight. I've always had great conversations with you and your tutelage and for me and for Alex when he was here. So I can't tell you what a great mentor you've been, I think, to everyone that you've worked with.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? No? Okay. We're going to go out to Scott. Is it Holtz? Heights? Am I on the wrong agenda item?
Yes, the, yes.
The interim one?
Correct.
Okay, then I'm going to call you up later, okay? Thank you. Gary Blair?
This is what it feels like, huh?
Does it feel good?
Good evening, council, mayor and council and staff and everyone and citizens. It's great to be back here. I have not been back to a meeting since last November. I did listen to the meeting where Dale resigned. My internet was coming in and out, but that finally got resolved and everything. But the reason I came down tonight is I just wanted to express to Dale how heartfelt I am of the work that she has done for Orange City. She helped me along. I ran for my second term as mayor because she was the city manager. She, she's a teacher, you know? She helps everyone along. I hope everyone listens to her. When I talk about her, I always tell people that she's so mellow and calm, but yet intelligent and looks from things at all different angles and comes up with the right decision, which is a great quality to have. And it's, she's really going to be missed. You guys are going to miss her big time because she's just a wealth of knowledge. What'd she say, 50 years in government?
Almost.
Yeah, she's crazier than me. I've got 43 in education, so it's a long time. But Dale, I wish you well, and I'm sure you'll enjoy retirement. Everyone I know that retires say that they have more things to do than they did before, and they don't know how they did everything before they, you know, retired. So I think it'll fit you well. I'm looking forward to my retirement also at the end of this school year, if not before. But no, you've just, the things you've done for this city, all the things they listed on your proclamation, is just incredible. And you were just who we needed at the time. Because if you remember, right, we did a search, the pool was a little bit shallow, and so I made the motion. Tom was mayor at that time, and I said, I think we need to relook at this and get some more candidates. And at that time, you threw your name in the hat and you outshined all the other candidates by a mile. And then you proved your worth to the city over these almost 10 years. So I feel blessed to have worked with you, and you've coached me in things, and we didn't always agree on everything, but I don't ever remember us having a really bad argument or anything about anything because of your demeanor. And you do, and you were usually right, I might add, you know, when we talked about things. But at any rate, best of luck to you.
Thank you.
And thank you for your service to the City of Orange City.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to citizens' comments. Janet Goff from the Deland and Greater West Volusia Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you for seeing me tonight, and I'd also like to just say how much we appreciate all the time that we've had working with Dale Arrington, and we will miss you as well. We thank you for everything you've done. Tonight, I have an announcement to make. As part of our 2025 Board President's Mission this year, which was to let everyone know that it's your chamber, we're building stronger city-specific outreach and opportunities to spotlight Orange City, DeBarry and Deltona businesses, all within one powerful regional chamber structure. So we've got big news for Orange City. Tonight I have with me our board member Stan DiCosta from John Knox Village, who's here. I have Terry Beer, our outreach manager, and Peggy Smith, our Director of Member Engagement. And we have a banner and a certificate for you as soon as we make the big announcement here. So tonight, we are proud to unveil the Orange City and Greater West Volusia Chamber of Commerce brand identity. It's created to honor the unique pride and strength of Orange City's business community. And while our operations remain regional, this new local identity is our commitment to making sure that Orange City businesses feel seen, heard and supported. A name that brings local pride and regional strength together, working hand in hand for the Orange City business community. Because after all, it's your chamber. So with regional roots and now local branches, we're just getting started. So look for more to come on how the Orange City Chamber brand will develop. And thank you for allowing us to serve your city.
All right, we have the banner. You want a picture right now?
I would, if you have time.
Counsel. It's the only time we're getting us together, so.
Oh, that's awesome. Very awesome. Thank you.
That's awesome. And this is for you to keep, so.
Thank you.
Get a photo? Everyone's in. One, two, three. One, two, three. Hold on one second. One, two, three. One, two. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Yes, we are excited. Just getting started, right?
That's right.
Thank you. He wants it right here?
Yeah.
Aw, that's, it's okay.
Thank you. Okay, we have another citizen's comment I need to read into the record. It's from Sam Mason. I'll have to get your address after the meeting. It says, "Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council Members, City Manager and the new City Legal Council. My statement this evening should not be construed as an admonishment nor criticism to anyone within this body. It is solely presented for your consideration and edification as a suggestion that may be of help and be of service to this governing body. The subject of my statement is to relate my experience in the corporate sector as it relates to key personnel succession planning and how that could benefit the municipal corporation known as Orange City. First of all, most, if not all, corporations have a plan of succession in place for all key personnel within their organization. This plan exists to provide the framework to support temporary then permanent filling of key personnel positions under extraordinary circumstances. That is to say, in the event that a key person or persons become unable or unavailable to execute the duties and responsibilities of their position. The circumstances regarding the inability of a key person to execute their responsibilities are thoroughly described and easily discernible as to who, what, when and how that plan is triggered and placed into action. Such corporate plans are codified with company policy and overseen most often by the Board of Directors and upper management. It is suggested that if the City Council would choose to implement such a key personnel plan, this plan could be codified within the City Charter of Orange City at the next City Charter review and overseen by the Mayor, City Council and the City Manager with the assistance of legal counsel. If codified within the City Charter, the planning and succession process would become immutable and undeniable, fully describing the process to be followed. For example, for each key position, there should be an existing person occupying a specific city position that is designated to fill in temporarily for each of these key personnel positions if the need should rise. Tenure in that temporary position should be clearly stated as temporary and be subject to frequent oversight by the Mayor and City Commission. Furthermore, and as a temporary position, this council could decide to grant either full or limited powers, responsibilities and privileges for the temporary posting if they so desire and feel as prudent. Again, the intent is fully defined and codified within the City Charter. The intent would be to provide minimal functionality while avoiding overloading and overwhelming the individual charge with temporary duty. The chief benefits of this approach are as follows. In an undeniable and immutable line of succession, granting full or limited responsibilities while in that temporary position, transparency and fully defined oversight by the City Council, succession becomes simple, seamless and avoids any unnecessary disruption of city business. Enables the Mayor and Council to focus solely on the search and vetting process of a new replacement for the vacated key position under consideration. It could also prescribe and authorize the council to negotiate with and promote the temporary individual into the vacated key position if the council is satisfied with the performance, experience, etc. If and only if the individual in agreement with a negotiated offer, in any case, the individual will be guaranteed the option to revert to his or her previously held position if they so choose without penalty or prejudice, along with customary salary adjustment at the former rate during the temporary service. In conclusion, there is no crystal ball, and we all know there is no way to predict the future. However, a good, well-thought-out succession plan provides certainty, resilience and recoverability for the city with the least amount of disruption. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time and consideration. Sam D. Mason. I did that really close to three minutes.
Yeah.
Not bad, huh? Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on. Is there any other citizen comments tonight? See, and now we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
A second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Kaylee?
Councilmember Darms?
Yes.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Tiamson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Richardson?
Yes.
Yes, and I didn't ask, is there any public comment on the consent agenda? See, none. Motion passes. Moving on to 5A, ordinance number 692. Paul, would you read that into the record?
Certainly. Madam Mayor, this is item number 5A on the agenda. This is ordinance number 692. In ordinance of the City Council, the City of Orange City, Florida, updating the five-year schedule of capital improvements for fiscal years 2024, 2025 through 2028, 2029, repealing all ordinances or part of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing for an effective date. And Madam Mayor, that was the first reading of the ordinance.
Thank you. Mr. Joe Ruiz?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Respect the members of the public. Joe Ruiz, Development Services Director, for the record. So today before you is the five-year capital, schedule of capital improvements, or CIP, as we call it in the planning world. So essentially, ordinance 692, number 692, is really a state-mandated process that we have via Florida statutes. And so, not to confuse anyone, as we go through this, really it's the schedule for the starting fiscal year 24, '25. So realistically, this has to be done every year, and so to do it within the current fiscal year is obviously the practice, so that we compare it to our current budget. And I was glad that we were able to get it in right before adopting our new budget and right before Dale left. So Dale can be here for this as well. So with the capital improvement schedule, there is capacity improvements projects is what you see in that schedule. So the state is looking for us to evaluate what increases capacity. What are we funding within our budget for capital improvements that increases capacity throughout our city? And there are three that are state-mandated. It's sanitary sewer, potable water and drainage. The others are essentially optional or if we want to include it. But it's good to include these items because it allows, when we're applying for grants, when we're showing the state, you know, there are capacity improvements that we are planning for that the city has, and there's initiatives that are going forward, especially when we look at new laws and legislations and requirements for septic to sewer and things like that, which the city is actively working on. So with the agenda item, there is a level of service analysis for these concurrency facilities that is included, that staff has done. And so when we look, we're looking currently at the planning horizon year of 2035, right? Soon enough, we will be bringing before you what's called the EER, the Evaluation and Appraisal Report, which is another state mandate, which has to occur every seven years, which is where we look at our comprehensive plan and update it accordingly for the next, essentially, 10 years. There's got to be a 20-year window minimum, right? So we're looking at 2035. We're in 2025 to this year. And so we're looking to plan for 2045 as we continue to move forward. The current population, based on BEEBER, Business Economic, or the Bureau of Economic and Business Research, currently they send out kind of a yearly update with census data to say, more or less, where is the city at? What is the estimated city population? In April of 2024, we received that estimated population of 14,866. So if you look back at the previous agenda item from the previous '23, '24 fiscal year, that is actually an increase of 553 people in our city for fiscal year 24, '25. So the city's growing. We see it, right? We feel it. We see development. And that also increased the projected population for 2035 to 17,929. So as we look, as mentioned, there's the three requirements, which is potable water, sanitary sewer and drainage. Our level of service that's established in our comprehensive plan is 300 gallons per day per equivalent residential unit. So the city currently has four water treatment plants and 10 wells within the city. And to the city's credit, although the city has grown, the average daily demand of the city continues to go down. It continues to reduce, right? And that is to the credit to many of the improvements that Public Works has done, utilities has done with reclaimed water, converting to reclaimed water instead of using potable water for irrigation. A lot of that has been also pipe replacements and improvements, infrastructure improvements to our utility system, to where many of these pipes were leaking. Many of these piping, pipes were defective. The city also has invested and is continuing to invest in SCADA, right, and what is monitoring of usage and things like that. So we've actually been able to have a .7 or .07 decrease in our water usage for this 24, '25 year. So very impressive. And obviously, we are beneath the cup allocation that we have, which is for 2.539 million gallons a day. So we are, we are well within our capacity currently. So as mentioned, reclaimed water expansion, green sand filter within the main water plant, which actually is more of a water quality project, and also the city's alternate water supply planning, which we have planned projects for water supply for the next, I believe, 10 years, if I'm not mistaken. We look at another one, which is sanitary sewer. So our level of service is 284 gallons per day per equivalent residential unit. And so the city, actually, we don't have any plants. We wholesale. We have a wholesale agreement with Volusia County, and they provide those, that plant capacity. So the city, essentially, we do have mains. We have force mains and gravity mains. We have lift stations that are ours and that we maintain in service to provide service. But essentially, the plant capacity comes from, all that water gets routed, sewer water gets routed to county plants. And so as you can see here, the county does have sufficient capacity within their plants. If you look at the Southwest plant there, that is below the capacity of 2.7. And also in the Down North plant, that is below the capacity of .6. So just to update you on some projects, and we included this in the level of service analysis, the city is proud to announce and that we have completed certain septic-to-sewer improvements throughout some of our roadways. And so in the current year, 24, '25, the city has been able through the septic-to-sewer program to do an eight-inch gravity sewer main um, through the septic-to-sewer program to do an eight-inch gravity sewer main installed along Graves Avenue between Orange and Levitt, another eight-inch gravity sewer main installed along North Orange between Graves Avenue and East University, and also an eight-inch gravity main along, uh, Orange between East Graves and East Blue Springs. So if you all have seen detours and signs in the public, right, it has disrupted our normal daily, uh, commute, that is why. They're doing these improvements and upgrading, um, from septic to sewer, um, to, to improve, right, our, our basin, to improve, uh, Blue Springs, to improve, um, essentially, our water quality in the area. Uh, so solid waste, um, our level of service for solid waste, that's another thing that we analyze within our comprehensive plan, is six, uh, pounds per day per capita or per population. Uh, so Tamoka Farms Road is the facility which essentially, um, Joe, who, which now will be, right, Waste Pro, they essentially have, uh, they collect the garbage, the solid waste, and then they eventually transfer it over to the county's, uh, solid waste plants. And so interestingly enough, while I was doing this update, um, the county did, uh, mention that, that, that they still do have capacity. Uh, there's a closure date of the current Tamoka Farms, um, landfill, um, expectancy life, what's remaining there to be able to house solid waste is, uh, June twenty-twenty-seven. Um, at the bottom of that letter that we got for the, for this last year, there was actually a caveat that the county is working on an approved permit, which is for stormwater improvement, but also to expand their landfill, uh, facilities, which actually will add over a hundred years' worth of capacity. So, not to say throw out more trash, right? Because there's capacity, because obviously, we, we try to be smart with that, but essentially, uh, there is, uh, over a hundred years' worth of capacity that the county has to serve the municipalities for solid waste. So I found that very impressive. When we look at stormwater, uh, capital improvements, the city really does, through our land development code, uh, we, we have a, a very, um, thorough code with, with stormwater requirements that essentially require that projects house their own, um, stormwater retention onsite, and that whatever they, um, whatever comes off of that site, whatever discharge, is no greater than what existed, right? There's no greater than what was prior. And so with stormwater, a lot of the improvements that you see, um, for each project is, you know, that serves that project, right? And it's not, um, hindering, or it's not impacting, uh, the exterior or existing neighborhoods or communities. So through that, we're able to, to use our code to kind of require those, those before we approve. Um, staff goes through, uh, stormwater, uh, calculation review, um, both through s- city staff and Public Works and Utilities, as well as, um, with our consultant, right? So we, we make sure we review those items. Uh, also, most recently, on June tenth, the city did approve, or the city council did approve, the Stormwater Management Master Plan, also known as Phase Two, uh, which updated, uh, which was updated on that day, and updated future initiatives that the city is going to be taking, um, which also included the, the rate study to be able to fund some of these projects over the years, um, and just improve our systems. Uh, we've been impacted significantly by obviously Hurricane Ian Nicole, which we're still working on grants for, and most recently with Milton, right? So our city took a, a significant hit. Um, so we are, we are working on, um, trying to recover from all that, get grant money to improve our systems, improve our city, um, and the safety of our, of our structures and, and our residents with, with flooding. Uh, with the, uh, Transform Three Eight Six Grant Funding, um, the city, um, has gotten approval from Volusia County, and I believe Volusia County is, I think, spearheading many of these studies now. I think they've kind of taken, um, charge on this. And essentially, these funds are, uh, to study six basins, which affect the city as well as Volusia County areas, uh, which is the Florida Hospital area, the Graves Avenue Basin, uh, Marshall Pond, Poozer Pond, Miller Pond, and Rhode Island, East Rhode Island Avenue. Uh, so the, the county is working on that. Last I heard, they're working on the scopes, and, and they've got consultants already on, on tap to, to get these studies going. Public schools, big conversation always, um, especially when it comes to student capacity, student stations, and things like that. Uh, so when we look at the, um, inter-local agreement with, uh, the school board, I believe that was approved, uh, with all the municipalities of Volusia County back in two thousand and seven, Dale, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was circa that, that year, um, to where essentially, the, the school board and the cities work together to establish, um, this, a standard language for our comprehensive plans in our element, for, uh, school, uh, capacity in the school, school element in our comprehensive plans. So with that, elementary and middle schools are allowed a capacity, permanent student capacity, uh, to exceed it by a hundred and fifteen percent. Um, a level of service for high school is a hundred and twenty percent of, of that. And so, um, if you see the chart here, um, staff was able to provide what, what the current utilities are, or utilizations are based on Volusia County's, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four, or twenty-four, twenty-five numbers, and then you can see the reserved utilization. So current is the students that are there today, active bodies in the classroom. Reserved are for those projects that have been approved, um, that essentially, once they're built out, then those students will exist, and they will be in, in the station, essentially. So when staff, uh, reviews projects, especially rezonings that come to you all, we always make sure to have that staff report to show, it is anticipated that this project will have or generate so many students, right? And so, uh, there is what is called a finding of adequate capacity, and then there is a, a school concurrency form, uh, that eventually, at time of site plan, a subdivision, which is break, groundbreaking, uh, where they do, um, school concurrency reservation. So they actually reserve those, um, numbers because the students are coming, right? Because the project is underway. So the only one that we see in the red that's above the level of service, um, is Orange City Elementary. Uh, currently, that is showing a permanent capacity of five thirty-nine, and enrollment in, um, and that should be twenty-four, twenty-five, um, is, is five hundred and ninety-five, right? So, uh, when this school is built out, it will have about seven hundred and fifty student stations, which if I did the math correctly in preparing for this, that brings the reserve utilization down to eighty percent, right? So it brings it below the hundred and fifteen percent that is allowed by the inter-local agreement and by our LOS in our, in our comprehensive plan. And that should be completed by September, um, mid-September, end of September of this year. So, the school, yep, the school project.
I thought it was only part of it. It's going to be.
No, I think, yeah, no, they, they, they're all phases of it, I believe, are, should be done. So that'll include onsite parking for, um, staff, that'll include a, a, a loop for parent pickup onsite. Um, the only thing that will still remain offsite will be the bus, the bus loop pickup. Uh, parks and rec. So when we look at, uh, capacity and, and capital improvements, we also look at parks. Um, so the, the LOS for neighborhood parks are two acres per a thousand people, and the community parks LOS is four acres per a thousand people. So when we look at that, um, our requirement for neighborhood parks is twenty-nine point seven, and we are at ninety-seven point thirty-two acres. And for community parks, the requirement is fifty-nine, uh, acres, and we are at seventy-five. So really, we, we, our code has a, a requirement, especially for PUDs that are for residential, that amenities and parks be part of that design. And so we, we really try our best to make sure that those amenities are included, and we're able to tack on those, those acreages to the neighborhood parks because they are serving the immediate neighborhood. And many times, too, uh, these are public roads, right? And there is public access to these facilities, which, um, we, we can be, we're able to put that number in and add it in. Uh, the city recently, a few years back, approved the, the Park and Rec Master Plan, which focused on redeveloping existing parks, and Valentine Park, which, uh, was, is funded and, and was, is in this schedule, uh, for, for redesign and improvements, which, uh, that's an initiative that the city's still working on. And then also a recent approval, uh, approval that was given by the city council, I think last meeting, uh, I heard it over the, the live, was the Coleman Park upgrades that you all approved. Another one, uh, other than schools, is transportation. That's a big conversation. Projects are coming in, things are being built, um, and, uh, transportation, more cars on the road, more cars on the streets. Uh, so when we look at our comprehensive plan, um, we see LOS, the Level Service E for all state, county, and city thoroughfares, except Volusia Avenue, uh, which is, um, for, is, it's, the level of service is maximum is D, right? That is what that can be. We don't see F, which is good. F means failure, right? If you saw, saw F on a paper, F means you failed. Um, so looking at the trip counts that have been taken, Volusia County is working on updating their trip counts throughout, throughout the county. The last ones that were done were twenty-twenty-one. They were twenty-twenty-one. So although those numbers were in twenty-twenty-one, the county does do kind of like the school board, where they, um, work with the cities to, um, reserve projects. And so they, they keep a tally of all the projects that are coming in, the average daily trips, and peak hour trips that those create. So although they don't have actual count up, updates, but, uh, we do keep a, um, a chart or, or running, uh, living document that kind of keeps, uh, track of all these projects and how many average daily trips and PM and AM peak hour trips they're adding to the, to the, uh, system. So, uh, Graves Improvement from VMP to Kentucky, that three-year improvement was completed in twenty-twenty-four. That was a state, um, funded improvement there because of safety. So wasn't really a capacity, capacity improvement, but it was a safety improvement, and it, it provided a turn lane, which does kind of relieve capacity going up Kentucky. Uh, so that, that, we did include that on there, and that was a project that had gotten completed. Uh, VMP, uh, Harley to Rhode Island, so there is a, a planned, uh, four-lane improvement, um, that has been completed. I got with the county, and the county says that's checked off, that's completed. They are now working on, um, designing and funding the improvement, um, from VMP, from, uh, Rhode Island all the way up essentially to Graves, and they're working, um, hard on the connection and design of VMP up to four seventy-two. So they both, they have both of those projects in the pipeline, and they're working on, on getting those approved. So, um, we have seen VMP grow, we have seen VMP improved over the years, and a lot of that really has been us working with the, with the county to pipeline these proportionate fair share dollars to these improvements so that they are, they stay within our city, um, and, and they're, you know, we're, we're seeing the progress and seeing these roads be improved. The Rhode Island and Levitt, uh, intersection, uh, which we all know is the, the roundabout. Uh, so FDOT did commit funds this year, I believe it was in, in May, um, or, or April or May when they committed funds to that. So they pretty much said, this, this money's secured, this money is for the city to, to build the roundabout. And so they issued a notice to proceed on May sixteen, twenty-twenty-five. The city put that out to bid, um, we are currently working on, um, re, re-putting it out to bid, or, but prior to doing that, we're going to bring that to city council. Um, our city manager presented that to you all a few meetings back, or a couple months ago, essentially giving a status update, prices have gone up, um, we know everything's going up. And so we're, we're looking at options for other funding and things like that, and, and thanks to Devlin and his team, um, we're working together to try to figure out maybe TPO funds and things like that, that, that we're trying to work through so that we can bring it to you all, and present to you all, and give you the updated cost, and get direction on how you want to proceed with that. Um, I would say, um, Becky spent many hours, she thinks she got many gray hairs working on that project, um, so it's something that, that staff has invested a lot of time on trying to get that accomplished. Um, from I, on I four, from Seminole to SR four seventy-two, the state has money, um, dedicated or has, in their CIP essentially to designing that, um, segment, as well as adding lanes through, um, to expand it, and as far as they're beyond the ultimate program. Uh, sitting in the last TCC TPO meeting, um, TPO TCC meeting, there's actually a resolution that was, um, approved, um, to, um, in, in, increase the, the level of, uh, priority on the expansion of the St. John's Bridge, uh, from one oh four, uh, one oh, from, between one oh four and one oh eight on I four, um, to look at expanding, designing and expanding those bridges because we, if you travel through there, that, that gets kind of, um, stacked up and, and can be a task to get through there. So, uh, TPO is working on moving that through, and I believe the TPO board will, will be seeing that resolution shortly. Um, the county currently, as mentioned, is, is working on designing VMP and widening, um, up, uh, from Rhode Island all the way essentially up to four seventy-two. So I believe both phases are almost fourteen million dollars in, in design and construction. Uh, one of the projects that are finally breaking ground and finally moving ahead, on August fourteenth, um, this, the Assistant City Manager Christine sat in, myself, Bilal, uh, we were at a meeting over, uh, in Sanford with FDOT and with the contractor to talk about the pre-construction so that they can get started on the Enterprise and US seventeen ninety-two improvements at the intersection. Uh, so we were there at that meeting, this has been funded, long funded, um, and so we're looking, um, we're essentially looking for that to, to be underway. So if you see that project, and you see construction vehicles, and you see it closed off at some point, um, they will be sending us all the, the maintenance of traffic and things like that to know when closures are going to occur, uh, but essentially, that is, uh, on, underway, uh, currently. West French Avenue, also known as Medium French, this is another FDOT, uh, project that we're working with them on. Um, for some reason, since, uh, Becky retired, they've been silent. So I've got to kind of knock on the door and figure out, where are you guys at? Where is this at? What's happening? Uh, so essentially, that's a funded amount of one point five million dollars for construction, um, to where we're going through and making sure we get a lap agreement for all that. And, uh, they have put it, pushed our lockdown because of how close we were to the end of the fiscal year, the state fiscal year, they've rolled it over to twenty-twenty-six. Um, so those, those funds are still active. And so the notice to proceed, I'm hoping we can get by spring, um, they have us for a lockdown of February of twenty-twenty-six, so, um, I'm hoping to have that accomplished, and we can, we can move forward with all that, those improvements. Uh, so that's all from me today, unless you all have any questions. Um, but at this time, staff recommends the city council approve ordinance number six ninety-two at first reading, and schedule second and final reading for September ninth, twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Seeing none. Any public comment on this agenda item?
Second reading is actually going to be, um, September tenth, at six thirty PM. That's when the meeting will be scheduled. That's the first budget meeting that we have to move, um, based on the school board's budget adoption.
Thank you, Kelly.
For the record.
Thank you. Okay. Next time, can you address the chair before you just speak out? Because I just went to public comment.
I'm sorry.
Threw me off. Okay. No public comment, we'll bring it back to the council for action.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation to approve ordinance number six ninety-two at first reading, schedule second and final reading for September tenth, twenty-twenty-five, um, after proper notice.
A second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Kaylee?
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Darn?
Yes.
Mayor Mark?
Yes, an ordinance number six nine two at first reading passes, and schedule second and final reading September ninth, twenty-twenty-five.
Ten.
So, September tenth?
Yep.
September tenth, twenty-twenty-five. Okay, moving on to six A, uh, public hearing, ordinances, second and final reading, ordinance number six ninety-one. Mr. Waters?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is item number six A, ordinance number six ninety-one. This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Orange City, Florida, creating a new chapter, ten point three, special events of the city code of ordinances to establish procedures and guidelines for the regulation of special events in the city, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, incorporation into the code, severability, and an effective date. And Madam Mayor, that is the second and final reading.
Thank you. Maddie McAllister, Public Information Officer.
Good evening, Maddie McAllister, Public Information Officer. Uh, no PowerPoint tonight, nothing shiny, nothing crazy. It's the second reading, so we went through this ordinance in detail last meeting. Um, no changes have happened since that meeting to this meeting. This is the ordinance that will put our special events back in the, uh, policy, and no changes to how we've actually been operating, are, uh, represented at this time.
Any questions or discussion from the council? Seeing none, we'll take it out to the public. Any public comment? Okay, we'll bring it back to the council for action.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance six ninety-one, creating a new chapter, ten point three, special events of the city code of ordinance to establish procedures and guidelines for the regulation of special events in the city.
My second. We have a motion, we have a second. Kaylee?
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Darn?
Yes.
Councilmember Knight?
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Mayor Mark?
Yes, an ordinance number six nine one at second and final reading passes. Moving on to seven resolutions, do we have none? Number eight, discussions in action, eight A interim city manager employment agreement with Christine Davis, uh Dale Arrington.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman and Chairwoman and members of the council, Dale Arrington, City Manager. Um first, I would like to take just a moment and frame the issue for you. Um particularly in light of Mayor Marx's reading Mr. Mason's comments into the record. I think it's very important that you understand tonight where you sit and that you operate underneath the city manager um council form of government. And underneath that form of government, you all act as the corporate body and you're subject, you're part of a representative democracy. All of your actions conceivably can change every two years with an election and we get a new corporate body in whole or in part. So the day-to-day operation of your city government is conducted underneath a manager form of government and they are responsible for the hiring and firing of all the different department directors. And I do want to assure you that we have succession plans in place and personnel policies that are brought to you for amendment. But you do not participate in the hiring or firing or disciplinary actions of any of our one hundred and forty-five employees. That all goes through the manager at this time. But you are responsible for selecting your three charter officers. One of those is the city attorney, Mr. Waters is up here for his first time tonight. One of them is the city manager and I'm up here for my last time tonight. And of course, we've got Kaylee who who we hope will um, you know, be here for for quite a while and provide some continuity amidst these comings and goings. So I just wanted to take a moment and frame that for you. Tonight, you're being asked to um do something in the on an interim basis and that is appoint an interim city manager. And an interim city manager is quite different than an acting city manager. So when I go on vacation for five days or seven days, I will appoint someone to take my place while I'm out of town. And that person, normally Christine, but there have been other people on times because I'd like to train additional people, um is given the day-to-day operations of the city to operate under the standard operating processes that have already been put in place by none other than your current city manager. And I've got to tell you, before I turn things over, I've often looked at Christine and said, here's what you can do and here what here's what you can't do. I'm gonna say you've got full duties, but boy, you better not fire anyone while I'm gone. All all that changes with an interim city manager. She or he, that interim city manager, is no longer acting underneath an existing city manager. Instead, they're having the active in day-to-day interactions with the elected council to help you shape your policy and then they become fully responsible for the implementation of that policy. So there's, you know, it is a much more responsible position than being named a temporary acting city manager. And I just wanted to make sure that you understood the gravity of that position before we I I launched into what's what's going on, particularly in light of um wanting to explain a little bit more about the council manager form of government that you're currently operating under and cannot change until you go through your charter review. So with that said, on August twelfth, uh at your last meeting, uh we had a discussion about appointing an interim city manager. And at that meeting, you asked that I go back and negotiate a contract with Christine Davis for be- becoming an interim city manager. And I did that and it's attached in your agenda item. The um interim city manager will uh the contract, which is very similar with just a few little changes in it to the one that was presented to you on August twelfth, provides for a number of things, it is eight pages. The uh first thing it provides for is that the interim city manager will serve at your pleasure for an indefinite period of time, which gives you as much time as you need to appoint a new city manager or a permanent city manager, no matter who it is. It, you know, the role has been filled and that interim city manager, Ms. Davis, if you elect to make her that, will be the person who is responsible for the day-to-day operations of the city as as long as you choose, there's no expiration date in that. The second item uh that is in the contract is it the duties and responsibility of that position are exactly those of the city manager as outlined in your city charter and in the code of ordinances. I did not reattach them to this, they were in your August twelfth memo. Um but it is the full range of duties that you would expect the interim city manager to perform. The third item is that it enables the city, the interim city manager to return to her current job as acting city manager once you have filled the interim city manager's position, providing she is not your selection. And
Assistant, you said acting?
Yes, assistant city manager. She would just go back to that role as if she never left it. And the other thing that the contract covers are all the normal things that you would find in a modern-day city managers type contract. It covers um and I'm I'm just gonna name a few, you know, the equipment that she has. A a computer, a a laptop, a uh a city phone. It covers her professional development, you know, going to conferences and attending courses. It covers the dues and subscriptions. Uh it covers insurance, which every city employee has. In fact, most of these items are all normal things that are covered underneath our city employee's manual. There's really not any surprises here. It covers her leave rates, what happens for uh disability during periods of time of disability. Covers indemnification, bonding, and a whole host of small miscellaneous things um that are are typical of all of our city employees. Remember, we have over a hundred-page city employee personnel manual and we're just highlighting that she's still part of that system and is entitled to the same rules and benefits that we follow uh for all of our city employees. The um contract that is in your in your um August twelfth agenda is a little bit different than what is presented to you tonight. Uh the first thing is is we scrapped the car allowance. Ms. Davis did not really want a car allowance, she would rather check out a pool car if she needs to um drive for extended period of time or around town or is taking, you know, people with her as passengers, she would use a city pool car. Be covered by the city insurance that way as opposed through a car allowance. The second item that is different is uh the blanks have all been filled in and the gender or pronouns have all been corrected. Um you know, and that's that's a major major difference and if you were going line by line, that's where you would see the preponderance of changes were made. So the big blanks that were filled in were the name, Christine Davis, and the salary. And coming up with the salaries, I attached to your agenda item the best I could do in two weeks with a lot of help from my friends in other city governments and with uh our city clerk, Ms. Burleson, helping me compile some data. And that represents uh the salaries of all current Volusia County managers as best as I could ascertain, and I feel it's pretty correct. And it also showed you all of the salaries for cities that um are between a population of greater than eleven thousand but less than nineteen thousand because those are comparable to us. And typically, when you look at city populations, uh the similarity gives you an indication of the breadth of scope of duties and the although it varies from city to city, uh the complicated nature of their um managers' jobs. Most of these cities in that range are going to be full-service cities with uh police, fire, finance, land development services, and oftentimes utilities. So when I'm looking at what is the appropriate salary, I simply did an average of all of the salaries in Volusia County. And that average is the one that we plugged into the contract. That number is one hundred and eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and seven dollars. That is the average salary of a city manager in Volusia County. If you looked at the average salary figure for those similarly sized um cities, it's actually higher. It's a hundred and ninety-two thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and some cents. So I went with the lower number in in discussing this with um Ms. Davis and that's what we agreed upon. Uh I think that she will be taking on a great deal of new responsibilities for this time period. She's not asking for any additional leave time. If you look at the leave that is credited to city managers, oftentimes it is greater than the PTO that general employees earn because they work so many hours, she did not ask for that. Nor is she asking for any special benefits in term of retirement like many managers have. So it was just the salary that we were negotiating and keeping everything else exactly as if she were a regular employee so that should she need to transition back to that, it will be seamless. So um I I know that also during this time, Ms. Davis will not be able to fill the vacancy that she's creating. At most, um she will be able to appoint someone to hold two jobs at one time, which as some of you, in fact, only you, Mayor Marx, I think, will recollect is what we had to do when we did not have a city clerk. Is we had um Ms. Davis at that time was our choice to be the acting city clerk, but she was still the finance director at the same time. So if she looks at the staff members who are capable of doing this, I anticipate that whoever she selects, if she selects somebody, will be doing the dual holding, meaning that the larger burden of work is going to fall on Ms. Davis during this time period. So I just point that out. Um so the contract that is presented to you, I'm happy to answer questions about it. Um I've got my copy here with me and I'll give it a shot. Mr. Reichman and I did put this together, so Mr. Waters, I believe, has reviewed it, but he probably does not know the thinking that went into it.
He has reviewed it, though? That was one of my questions.
I have, yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Uh I had a question about the salary. So you had given us all those findings of everybody in Volusia, you know, the cities that you gave us for the different salaries and did the average. With that being said, those averages and salaries are for city managers, not for interim, correct?
Correct.
So I would I would entertain to think that, and tell and tell me if I'm wrong, but that the interims, when I first looked at that, I thought, why would an interim make more than our current city manager that's been here for nine years and has way more experience? No, no offense, please don't take that as a, you know, I didn't mean that in a mean way, but you know, I looked, that was my first thought, is why would she get more than you when she's just coming in as an interim and and she does have experience, I will give you that, but we're talking Dale Arrington, okay? No offense.
Correct.
So. But that was my first question, is why would we go that high? And I and I know that you did the average, but that was on a city manager, not an interim. And when I looked around at different interim um salaries in Volusia, I didn't see that much. I didn't see that much money for interim because when I look at an interim, obviously, you're coming in to fill the position because it's empty and to keep the city moving forward, right? Until we decide whether you will be the the person or somebody else. And so with that being said, um if I understand this right, Christine, you've been two, three years in assistant city manager? Little over two. So that was my question, why would she, why would you put more, only because of the average?
No. Okay, so I I don't want to say yes because that isn't why. Um so it it was partly by the average. But you'll find what happens is when a city manager, especially one who has been in place for quite a while, once you become in place, sorry, once you become in place, then your contract has been set. And unless you want to renegotiate it and subject yourself to full potential renegotiation of your contract, you typically only get the cost of living increases that you earn during those years. So my original contract was at one forty and um I thought it was a good time to reset it at that, so yes, I looked at the averages because the work is not going to be any different. The work is going to be the same. And when you bring on a new city manager, I would anticipate that you would bring someone on who is going to be paid as much or more than what I'm I'm currently earning. I'm just anticipating that. So that was my thought process on that. I also know that um she's not going to have a a dedicated assistant full-time helping her out and that uh she's going to be working many hours because it will be a new job for her and um she'll probably need to work more hours than she currently does and probably more than I currently do right now, too. Because I'm an old hand at my job and I've, you know, but I can tell you when I first started, I've worked
A lot.
A lot.
Yeah.
And and you need that whenever you first start a job. Um you know, Christine has the luxury of knowing Orange City far better than I did when I started. Um, you know, Christine has the luxury of knowing Orange City far better than I did when I started here. Um, and, and knowing all the rules and processes, that learning curve is not there for her. But as the assistant city manager right now, she does not have a span of control. All of the direct reporting comes to me as the city manager. She's my right-hand person, but picking up these reins of, of needing to, um, go meet personally with every department head once a week or once every two weeks and then strategizing about how they're accomplishing their mission. That's going to be new to her.
Thank you. Counsel, any discussion?
Well, I've got a lot of, I've got a lot of roads to go down with it. And so I'm trying to figure out where exactly to start. With the average in pay, which I understand is what you discussed with Reichman and, you know, you, you averaged it out.
I didn't discuss that with, with Mr. Reichman. He was on his way out. I was the one who negotiated the specific terms of this contract.
I misspoke. Um, at any rate, I'm looking at the years of, of experience on some of these cities that are comparable to Orange City. And I'm looking at their rates. And I can understand. And then I'm looking at, and again, no offense, you've been here for two years as an assistant city manager. Not an interim, which I understand you have the difference there. But when we're looking at, and I don't want to put your current salary out there versus what the average is, it's, it's a big gap, um, for an interim city manager. So like I said, there's a lot of paths I can go down. I could kind of speak on one part of it as a money source. The other part where you talked about, there's, um, additional duties that she would be responsible for. As an interim city manager, possibly a choice as a city manager. We don't know at this point, right? So I, I'm a little uncomfortable with it, just from me, just looking at the, the difference. I'm, I, I don't know that I could justify it in my brain. I've been trying to look at it that way objectively, and I kind of figured it was on an average, because that's what it looks like. But that's where I'm coming out from it, so help me.
Well, there's two things I want to, to say, and I don't really want to get into the weeds or.
Sure.
Even though it's public record, it's embarrassing to employees. Uh, first, you need to know Christine is not the second highest paid person in Orange City. Um, that I have quite a number of department heads who earn quite a bit more than she does. Because of the day-to-day responsibility associated with their job. And the breadth of control of their job. Where they are running an organization with multiple divisions. And, um, extremely professional people who have doctorate degrees. So I, I need you to understand that the assistant city manager position. And what, you know, now she's going to the top of the food chain here. And I think it will be important that she earn as much as the people she has authority over. That's just me, not everybody agrees with that philosophy. Um, you know, and I understand that. Uh, I currently earn, uh, more than anyone else does, but not by a whole lot. So just, just pointing that out to you, so if that helps at all.
Well, yes and no.
Okay.
So I'm kind of, wait, I just want to back up a moment. Because what you said, I didn't say she was the second highest paid or would be.
I didn't say you said that. I just was putting that out there in case you didn't know it.
No, 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 that's fine. I, I didn't want to semantics. I just wanted to make sure that you knew that that wasn't a.
I did not intend to put words in your mouth, Councilmember Tanson.
You're not, you're not. So my question to you is, when, with that being stated, and then you say that you were the highest one, you said there's others that are higher.
Than Christine.
Than Christine, correct.
Cur- currently.
Currently.
Yes.
Nor did I want you to understand or that I was saying that I don't think that, that an interim would come with no increase. That would be preposterous to give someone additional work and additional responsibilities of that nature. And then not expect them to be compensated at some way. I just have a problem with the gap, that's all. That's just me.
Anybody else from counsel? This is pretty important. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, um, I'm looking at what Christine's got now to, to what you're proposing is sixty thousand dollars. But if you're the highest paid at a hundred and eighty thousand, why would we give her, to start into this new position, an immediate raise of ten thousand? That's.
To keep up with the times. If you had a different number in mind, then I suggest somebody put it out. She's right here and.
Let me, let me ask.
I, I, you know, I can't negotiate on her behalf.
Let me ask it this way. If we went from the intern position to the city manager's position, can it be like, you know, thirty, and then if she gets another thirty, you know what I'm saying?
No, sir, I don't understand what you're saying.
So in other words, right now she's at one thirty-seven. If she goes as the interim, she would get one sixty-seven. And then if the board votes to make her the city manager, then she can get a, a bonus of another thirty thousand to put her with her peers. You see what I'm saying? Cause she's.
That would be between you and Christine. And I, I will not be here to do your negotiating.
That's just another thought I had.
You know?
Exactly. I think, I think what I'm hearing from the council though, excuse me, I'm sorry, is that they're trying to figure, I, I, I'm listening, I'm, we're trying to figure out how you got to that number from ten thousand more or so than you make, right?
Yeah, with your tenure.
Right.
Something to keep in mind about that. Remember when you've been with a company, city, or whatever, for X number of years? Cause I'm having this issue where I work right now. The average increase yearly is roughly three percent.
Right.
You fall behind what the current average is for your job position. I'm just going to use mine as a for instance. I should be making over a hundred thousand right now. And I'm nowhere close. Because I've been with the company for ten years and I've only gotten three percent increases, but.
But you're still working there, you still, you, you, you took that job.
But, right. But if I left the company and they had to fill my position, they would have to offer the current salary for that position to that individual. They could not offer what they were paying me. They would have to offer more. So I'm not, I'm, I'm not saying what your concerns are, are not valid. I just want you to remember that when you're thinking about her current salary and how much you raise it. Just keep that in mind.
So, so, you know, I, I've explained what my thinking was. And, and that's fine if you don't like my thinking. My thinking was ten years ago, I took this job and I have been subject to the three percent colas each year. I'm a contractual employee. I did not benefit. And I'm personalizing this. The city manager's job is not part of the two pay studies that were done in between times. The only time you update it is when you change managers or you go through a contract renegotiation. Thus, I was just bringing it up to current standards. What I hear, or what I think is current standards, which is based on an average and not going back in and increasing any of the fringe benefits like you find for other managers. Didn't do that, kept her the same so that she could return to her position. So that was my thinking in going with the average salary. If you don't like that, I think that thirty thousand is too low. Because then she will have people who earn more than she does, um, reporting to her. Not saying it's a bad thing, but I've, I'd have to pull out my, my cheat sheet here. I don't think that's necessarily right. But she may be amenable to earning what I earn. I don't know if that's what your hangup is. That's something you would need to direct to her. So my mission was to go out and negotiate a contract. I did so. I used the average salary, not only for, uh, Volusia County, but for the state of Florida as my benchmark. Um, there are certainly managers throughout here, like for the city of Daytona Beach. Or the city of Deltona. Or the city of Deberry in Deltona has just done his one-year anniversary. Um, where he is earning tens of thousands more than Ms. Davis will be earning. Larger city.
Much larger city.
Yes.
Lots more money.
But no police department. So, you know, larger city, different span of control. They use the same, uh, sewer provider that we use. So, so.
I mean, it's a little hard because every city has their different dynamics, right?
Right.
So you can't, it's not apples to apples anywhere, oranges to oranges, right? It's, every city's different, so.
Everyone is.
So I'm sure it wasn't easy to put that together.
And if you look at these, you know, you will see that there's vast differences in terms of what the contributions are to 401Ks. None of that is in here. Some city managers, I sat there looking at it going, gee, I wish I could go back in time and renegotiate.
Yeah.
You know, I don't, I would have loved to have had six weeks of time off instead of three weeks of time off.
Well, I think that's.
You know?
Christine and I had that conversation that that's why city managers move around a lot, so that they can get more money. Because they get stuck in that contractual situation where they've agreed to a certain amount. And if they want more money, they have to go look in somewhere else. But if they're happy at their city, they stay, right? So I think that's important to.
So that was, that was my thinking, and I don't know how to help you here if you don't want to get a little more concrete. I do think your offer was a little low ball. That, that's my opinion and.
Whose offer?
Mr., Mr., Vice Mayor Grims.
Okay. And what was your offer?
Thirty thousand more than she currently earns.
Right, that would put her at, uh, one sixty-seven to start. But then, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
But then if, if we move from interim to city manager, we could give her a thirty thousand dollar bonus and put her at that rate. In other words, not to start her off at that rate, but maybe just to, I mean, that would be an incentive for her also.
Well, I was going to say, there's, there's one thing that I noticed when I was researching too. Is that when you look at interim salaries, right? And they're, they seem to be a little bit lower than the orig- the regular city manager. So let's just say that we bring Christine Davis in as the interim at a hundred and eighty-nine or, and some change. Um, and then we decide that we're going to go out for a search. Then we have somebody come in, you know, all these bids come in for the job. And they go, well, the interim's making one eighty-nine, so I want two-ten. Or I want more. That, that opens that door to say, I want more. And so I don't know that, I don't feel comfortable with that high. And like you said, if we don't, then we need to come up with a number that we are comfortable with, if that's what we want to do. But I just, I don't know.
Do you have any thoughts on this?
Wait.
Oh, sorry.
Um, my question is for a city manager position, is there a degree that's involved also? Or is it just based on experience?
Both, all of them. So as we discussed last time, when you go out and develop your profile for a city manager, you will need to develop what you want as the minimum qualifications. Um, oftentimes it is a mixture of education and experience. Um, Christine is a little lacking on formal education. But she has more good experience, uh, particularly in Orange City than anyone else I think you could find in a nationwide search. Plus, she has taken numerous, um, certification courses. Including certification from Stetson University and a management program. So you often look at, at that. There is also an International City Manager Association accreditation, which only a few, few people, you know, have. It's still relatively new. It's becoming more prevalent to find that.
Uh, I'd like to say I am in agreement with Vice Mayor Graham. I think starting at that one spot, it would avoid what you're concerned about. And I think that's where we need to be. And we can, that can be juggled once the decisions are made, you know, permanently. But I think it's a good start. So I'm in agreement with that.
We could do forty-twenty, I mean, oh, sorry.
Starting at one sixty, you're saying? And then if she takes the city managers, or if we decide to ask her to take the city manager's position, then we would give her that thirty thousand. That's what you're saying?
Yeah, because he said we would, she's at one thirty-seven, so we would do thirty thousand more. And if, if she progresses to the full, uh, capacity, then we would go to what the, what the level is now, or maybe a little more. But I think if we go too high, yeah, we're going to have somebody walk in and say, I want two hundred and ten, or I want two hundred and fifteen thousand.
And, and to be honest, we may have that happen anyway, because you heard Dale.
No, I understand.
We're a little behind the times, so that may happen anyway.
Yeah, but.
But I think we're just trying to proceed with caution here and, and not jump into the full.
Yeah. I agree.
Full thing.
I would like to ask Christine what she, what her thoughts are on it.
Well.
I'd like to put you on the spot, so.
No, I, I, we're, we're very close. I'm not very concerned. I think if I had to say anything, it's, you're paying for a position, not a person. I do bring things to the table that anybody else would not, and I, but I recognize the struggle. I did tell Ms. Marks that by going to this salary, I felt that this would be a starting point. Because we're resetting, like Dale explained, being here ten years, getting the average three percent. I see people who are money motivated tend to move. And I gave her some examples of good people that we weren't able to keep because of their ideas and, and desires to climb the ladder and, and see that, that, that income level grow. Obviously, I started here at a young age and have made my way up from the bottom through the, to where I am today. I'm very proud of that. I've seen a lot of growth in this city, uh, twenty-one years as your finance director. I have many accomplishments there that I'm proud of, not only for me, but for the team and for the city. I, I see that going forward, whether I'm chosen later as your, um, permanent city manager, or whether I go back to the assistant. I've had a very good career here and I'm very thankful for that. Um, I think we're really close. One sixty-seven is fair. Um, if I had to ask and counter, I would say one seventy, and we have a deal. But you all are, are, I'm here and I don't plan on not being here for, for the city as we transition. Um, and that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, anybody?
Would one seventy be something that we could agree on? I mean, that's meeting halfway.
We need to hear from the public too.
Well, I know, I got, let's go out to the public for a citizen comment. I have, if you, hold on one minute in the arena. I have Scott, want to come up?
We need a much bigger podium.
I need a bigger area myself.
Hi, I'm, uh, new to this, so I'm just going to say.
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Scott Heights, uh, ten sixty-four Natural Oaks. I don't know Christine at all. Uh, she's been here a long time, she's done a lot. She's been the assistant for how long, for as long she's been the assistant. My interpretation is you have an assistant, you're fortunate to have an assistant to groom to this position on purpose. If you weren't doing that, you wouldn't have an assistant. The standard is the standard. If the standard is whatever it is for an interim, that's what we should do. You're going to get behind. And I think that's what we're talking about a little bit. But at the same time, we should be looking for the next assistant quickly. Because I, I don't remember what it was, two weeks ago, you said you had three or five years you were hoping to be here, is that correct?
Three to seven before I consider retiring, yes, sir.
Okay, that's fantastic. But we need to be looking a little bit further down the road. We'd be fortunate to have her here three to seven more years, at which point we can groom the number two and have them in place. But that's the reason we're fortunate to have the number two, so that when there's a change that happens, whether it's retirement or another retirement, that someone can then take that spot. That, that's just my opinion. If the standard's 189, then that's the standard, and that's what it should be. That's just me.
Thank you. Narita?
My name is Narita H. Williamson, and I live at 811 Gunnison Drive. Okay, I've been working for the city or state of Alaska in the HR department, with, doing administrative work. And I will tell you this, we are a union in the state of Alaska. And whenever someone takes a position after 30 days, they have to get the salary of that person that they're taking their position until we can find a replacement. And it is very competitive. And even though she's been in the position as a, as administrative, what, for 21 years, these are things that you guys are gonna have to consider. Replacing her with all the knowledge and all the training that Dale Arrington has given her, it's gonna be a challenge. So I know you guys are talking about the salary of 189, 807, but what you're getting is someone that's already been groomed for the position. So you have to consider the recommendation by Dale Arrington, her knowledge, her expertise, her training, her experience, her qualification, her education, the cost of living, competitive, and stability. So those are all the things you have to think about. And I'm gonna tell you right now, if I was here, her, sitting here, it would be very difficult for me to accept the fact that some of the council members are challenging the cost based on a recommendation from the previous city manager. To me, it's showing a sign of disrespect, because Dale Arrington would not have considered bringing this to the table if she didn't feel that she can fit her shoes, or fill her shoes, I should say. So, it's something that you guys need to think about. But you guys put her in a position, she's only gonna be here for maybe another five to seven years. You're gonna have to groom someone for her position. So you might have to end up grooming two people, because if I was in Christine's position right now, I would walk out. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public like to speak at this time? Come on up.
Evening, my name is Gary Knight, and I live at 1555 North Silverstone Court. So after discussion and having been in management most of my life, when you have an individual that has been basically doing a job, okay? And you're asking them to step and fill some big shoes over here with Dale, okay? And obviously, I know from previous conversations I'm just watching, Dale has actually been grooming her, so she's done half the work for you. So I think, in fairness, if, the average is like 189,000. So what would it be five years from now, or six years from now, or even 10 years from now? Because the cost of living and all this stuff goes up, and things are getting more and more expensive. So I think that the council, you know, as a city, usually accept the suggestion that Dale has made, simply because, as I was talking earlier, that you gotta look, you got the training, you got somebody that wants the position. And if they want it, you know, if, if she can't do the job, she's an interim. You know? She's gonna work her butt off, right? And then you're gonna say, oh, we're done with you, we're gonna hire somebody else. But meanwhile, those, you know, two months, or three months, or four months, as she's gone by, I mean, she spent all these extra hours with, think, oh... But knowing that you got something in the table where the council has confidence in you enough to say, all right, we're gonna give you what Dale suggested, 189,000. But you're gonna expect that out of her. Right? And the same thing. You get a 3% raise, just like my wife. You know, she makes, you know, she should be making well over 100,000 a year. The same thing is, you're on social security. You should be making, you know, more than 1,000 a year on social security, I mean, 1,000 a month. But they give you these 2.5% raises, 3%, cost of living's like 7, but they give you 3 or so. I think that the suggestion that Dale has made with all the contract and work and stuff, I think the best thing the council could do at this time is give her the chance. Put it out there, say, all right, 189,000. But she knows that if she doesn't do the job, she's interim. So, for 189, she's gonna work. She's definitely gonna work. And that's just my two cents worth. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience? Public? Bring it back to the council. I wanna comment on Mr. Knight's comment. So the average is the average for a city manager, though. It's not for interim. That's what, we were not provided the interim average. We were provided a city manager average, which is different. If you search out there in interim, it's lower than a regular city manager. And, you know, Christine has 20 some years in, in finance, which is a very important segment in being a city manager. I, I, you know, I think that's a, a good thing. You have a lot of great qualities that fulfill that. Right? Would you agree with that? I'm just saying, like, so there's things that, that are good, but there's things that she doesn't have. Like, she said she doesn't have the formal education. I'm not sure if, do you have the planning background?
Only from working...
Right. So, and, and that was Dale especially. And not every, and just from researching, it's not every city manager has the same qualities. Like, I think you said it before, Dale, planning was your thing, you know? And that may not be another city manager's thing. It might be finance, or it may be, you know, whatever it may be, development. So, go ahead.
As far as formal education goes, I can take, I can be a little offended by that, and I'll tell you why. You can, some people, college is not for them. You try, it don't work out. But that doesn't make you any less smart, or any less able to learn, and learn more than some people with a college degree. So, being on the job and hands-on learning, you could get somebody with a college degree, and then when they step in, guess what? They gotta learn the job from the ground up versus somebody who's worked their way up and knows how to do the job.
Fair enough.
So that's something to keep in mind.
I agree with that. But is there, do you know, does anybody up here know of any city managers that didn't have education before coming in? Is that a thing? I don't know either. I'm just asking that question. You know what? It doesn't mean everything to me.
I just say, don't hold, don't hold that, like, as, as a, you know, a thing. Just say, well, she doesn't have a formal education.
I was just pointing out the things that she didn't have. She doesn't have to be perfect, I'm not saying that. She is perfect. I'm just saying that, you know, we have to, we did the same thing with the city attorney. We, we have this talk, and we dig it till we can't dig it anymore, to make sure we're making the right decision, that's all.
Right.
And, and what I've been hearing a buzz for the last few days is all the monies in, in the administrative offices, I'm sure you've all seen that, from the public. And that's not, I think I saw, someone said that the, our budget, or 70% of our budget was in the administrative offices, which I know is not true.
Yeah.
Right? So, but, so you can't believe everything you hear, right? But the bottom line is, is that we're, we're up here to decide, you know, we're fiscally responsible for the money, right? And I've always had to work my way up to something. I didn't just get it right away. You know, and I had to prove myself beforehand. She's proved herself as assistant, she's been awesome, right? But assistant and city manager are two different things, and Dale said that. It's way more responsibility, right? And so, that's where I'm hung up, and I, I just, I don't, you know, I don't wanna insult her by giving her only 30,000 more than she makes. That's not my intention, to insult our assistant city manager. We're just trying to make the right decision here, and I can't justify giving her as much as Dale Arrington gets. I mean, I'm sorry, more than, 10,000 more than Dale Arrington gets. And, but I also, I hear Ms. Arrington say, like, she can't make le- more, no, she can't make less than the people that she's over, 'cause that would be ridiculous, right? I think it would be a little ridiculous. I'm your boss, but I make less than you. That just doesn't feel right with me. I don't, you know? But, this is interim. And, and, and then to clarify one of the comments earlier from the public, I don't know what this council has, we haven't decided what we're doing yet. Whether we're, if we were to bring in Christine as the interim, and we decide she's gonna be our city manager, or we're gonna go out to search, we haven't decided that yet. So, but if we do decide to go out to search, then we have to think about the people that we're searching also, right? Not just Christine, but the whole pool. Does that make sense? So, it's never fun interviewing or hiring, or, I'm sure you all know this, right? So I don't, I don't really know where to go with this, except for what Dale said, is we have to come back with, what do we wanna offer her? And then she decides if she wants that or not. If she doesn't agree with what we are negotiating, then she's gonna stay in her job. And then we're gonna have to find another interim to come in from ICMA, or wherever we go. Is that correct, Paul? Or are we gonna have, like, tell us where we would go? If we, if she did not agree with our, our negotiations, where would we go from that?
Well, I think the League of Cities may provide city manager services, but you gotta realize, and I'm the new guy, so I don't wanna offend anybody here, but come Monday morning, you have no chief executive officer to run the city. And by your ordinance, you need a chief executive officer to sign contracts,
Correct.
to do hiring and firing. And remember, it's, it's hurricane season. You need a city manager if a hurricane comes through.
Mm-hmm.
It's budget season. You need a city manager to help get the budget across the finish line. So, this is kind of important that we make a decision tonight.
And that's why we're having this conversation, because I think we really need to know all of these facts, and we need to get to somewhere where we can meet in the middle, and, go ahead.
So, I wanna address a couple of things. First of all, not, no intent to make you less than. This is for a position, it's not for a person. It's not meant as disrespectful. This is a negotiation, and unfortunately, and fortunately, we have to do this in the sunshine. And here we are in the sunshine doing it. So, we have to do that, unfortunately. We are not unionized. We, we don't have certain things in our charter that say we have to, after 30 days, increase a rate, or any of that kind of thing either. And so we're spitballing, trying to figure out what we're doing. We've had weeks, weeks, literally, to, to digest that we are losing our city manager. Not that that's her fault, she's got every right to do so, and...
It's my fault.
It's not your fault. And then, and then, we had, we've only had a few days to look at this contract. So, we've had to look at this contract individually, because we cannot talk about it collectively until we're here. So that's what we're doing right now. So, to say that we are looking at it as a, as a price tag, it's not a price tag. It's called responsibility for our city. It's called responsibility for our employees. The semantics of whether or not somebody should make more than someone else if they're managing it, you know, sometimes these things happen. And if you are in a position, yeah, you can't just step out and go, you know what, I quit today, but I'm coming back tomorrow so I can redo my contract, 'cause I know I can make more money, because now it's 10 years later. That doesn't happen in the real world, and we all know that. And pie in the sky, whatever you wanna say. It, it just not, does not work that way. So, I am looking at it saying, is 10% too little? Yes, probably. Is 20%? 20% would be a good start.
10% or 20% of what?
Of her current salary as an increase. And the reason why I say that is because if you are looking at, looking at an assistant manager who is city manager, who is going to be an interim city manager, and possibly be that person that we're gonna select, maybe, for our permanent city manager, then there are some steps that have to be taken. And there is always some sort of interim, or probationary period, or things of that nature. And we have the unique position to make these things happen. We don't have to say it has to be this much, or it has to be that much. We can negotiate these things. So that's, that's the only reason I was coming at it the way I was. I just feel like it's a huge jump, and I don't think that we have seen results enough to be able to justify that to our constituents.
So do you have a number in mind?
20% is exactly what Harry said.
And what is that, Harry? You're doing the math.
The 165, 134.
Okay. Lisa Marie?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for 175.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor?
A second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Kaylee?
Vice Mayor Grims?
Yes.
Councilmember Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Darm?
Yes.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
No.
Mayor Marks?
No. Okay, motion passes.
We need five, don't we?
We need five?
It's a majority.
Majority. Okay. So it's at 175, right? Even?
Is, is that acceptable to Christine?
Yes, yes, sir.
She already said she'd take 170.
Well, I mean, you know...
That's why I was... What was that?
What was that?
That was my tablet. He's yelling at me.
You gotta dig that thing.
Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you all. Sorry it was difficult, I know it's painful, but thank you, and I will work very hard for you all.
Okay, we're moving on to reports. City manager?
I, I have, I have no report. We're working on a great many things. I'm working with Christine every day, and cleaning off my desk, and taking it from mine to hers, and working with each of the department heads on what they need to be focusing on while I'm gone. So hopefully it'll be a smooth transition. Thank you again for a lovely time and a lovely nine and a half years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any, I have a question for you. Do you have any update on the Lansdowne Avenue stormwater and sidewalk improvements?
Yes, we have made a decision that we are redoing it without getting any easements from adjoining property owners. The plans have been approved. John Peters? John Peters? Oh, I didn't see you.
Bilal's here. I like how quickly he jumped, though. That was awesome.
I know, it's that voice. She'll hone it.
For the record, Bilal Fikhar, Public Services Director. Actually, we just received our 100% plans for Lansdowne. John and I, we reviewed them, and we'll be putting them out for bid.
Yes.
So is Stratford, we have the plans, we are in the process of viewing those. So Stratford will be done and going out very soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the manager?
Can we get an update on Monastery?
Hey, Bilal.
The, the plans are done, we have all the temporary construction easements, and we are moving forward with actually the pre-construction. The contractor has already been selected. We are moving forward with the pre, pre-construction in... On the 8th.
On the 8th?
Yes.
Pre-construction.
Awesome, thank you.
The, the only holdup was getting all the construction easement, which was not from our end. It was just, we had to wait.
I would call them out, but, you know.
Yeah.
I would, too. Thank you.
But we are moving forward.
Thank you. Any other questions for the manager? Okay, thank you.
We also have the, the new Lansdowne sign on order.
Thank you.
Next week.
I had an email from a constituent asking where the sign was that says Lansdowne Avenue, so that's what she's talking about. Okay, move on to the city clerk.
No report at this time.
Any questions for the city clerk? Okay, move on to the city attorney.
Madam Mayor, pleasure to be here. I'm honored to be your new city attorney, but I have nothing to report.
Welcome, welcome, welcome. Welcome, welcome, welcome. Thank you, glad to have you.
Glad to be here, thank you.
I'm looking forward to moving forward with the charter review in the future. I had talked to Mr. Waters about that earlier today, since it had, our charter hasn't been updated since 1995. So, it's been a while. Let's see. Okay, any questions for the city attorney?
No.
No. Okay, we're gonna move on to new business. Anybody have any new business?
I've already mentioned to Christine, we're gonna start looking into these firms that have electric vehicles, that supposedly very cost-saving, so, just gonna get some ideas, you know, see what that is. So we're just, we're gonna put that together down the road, and we have some people that are willing to come in and give you the whole lay of the land, you know, from startup to maintenance, to the whole picture, so.
For electric vehicles?
I think?
No, 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 not so.
For electric vehicles?
You want self-driving, chief?
No comment.
No.
He's unanswering.
Just electric. So that's all I got.
Okay, anybody else for new business?
I do.
Okay, I, I wanted to bring up a conversation about, we had a little bit of mishap this week with the Rotary Club and the ball game. And I'm sure you saw the email that Kaylee forwarded, that there was tickets for only the council members, and that there was extra tickets for one of the council members and not all of us. So I just wanted to, I had a conversation with the president, and she was not happy. She was very disrespectful to Orange City and to myself. Kaylee heard her from the other side of the room, so she's a witness of what was going on. And basically, it was just, the conversation was, is that it should be equal for the whole council if we're a member of the Rotary Club. So, under new business, I was gonna ask if we could just bring back in the future, on a future agenda, to talk about what our membership entails, to recap it, and how much we pay, and see where we wanna go with that, if the councils are okay with that.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to approval amendments, we've already done that. And council and mayor's comments. Dana, you have any comments? Fran?
Sorry about that. I just wanna say, I've started out with the West Volusia Leadership Events, and there, I have some cohorts out there. And we, I thought it was really interesting, and I'm looking forward to it progressing, and what we'll be able to gleam out of what we are presented with. And they were really, you know, just really, really accommodating to us, and, and, you know, it's just, I'm very glad that I got appointed to that. Thank you so very, very, very much.
That's really good.
It's a big commitment, but it's, it's a really good experience. Christine, didn't you go through it, too? Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I'm glad that you're going through it.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Anything else? Vice Mayor, you got anything?
No, I've said enough, thanks.
Okay, well, I wanted to talk about the Florida League of Cities Conference.
That was good.
My turn, Fran? I'm just kidding. Remember that, Gary? I just wanted to say, it's always a good experience. They have different workshops every time we go, and I think we all kinda split up and went to different things. I know we didn't see each other a whole lot because we were learning, right? We did have some, a little bit of time together to bond as a council, but we, this experience is very important because we, we actually get to network with other cities, and we all have common problems, and, where we share good ideas for each other to bring back to our cities. And, you know, it's just, it's just all-around good experience. And so, I asked Kaylee if she would play this video that the Florida League of Cities had played from our past president, Michael Blake, because he was pretty phenomenal in explaining what the Florida League of Cities is about. It's just a minute or so long, and, and then they, they installed in the new president, Holly, which she's phenomenal, too. And these people are so excited to be in the Florida League of Cities, and, and they just do all kinds of things for us and for all the cities. They assist us in many different things, and of course, they're all about home rule. I know our, our former mayor was a home rule hero, right, for?
He never actually did that.
Oh, well, I thought you did. Well, I know you were heavily involved in that, so, and, you know, their, their thing is local voices, local choices, or, you know, they, it's real important that we keep the power in the cities and not in the state's hands, right? So, that's what they do. They rally up the, the cities of Volusia to, you know, go to our legislators, and they teach us how to do that, and they teach us about different ways to handle different situations. Like, we, we spoke with other people at the, the conference about, there's at least six cities in Florida that just had to get a new city manager, right? I'm gonna be proud to say that ours is retiring. Theirs wasn't, okay? You can figure that part out. So, we made sure to say that she was retiring, right? But it was good to share war stories, if you will, of what's going on, and bring back ideas. And like Vice Mayor learned about the electric vehicles, and I was just sitting there one day, listening to everybody, and he was like, "I wanna go back and, you know, propose this," and, you know, everybody, we went to this room with all these vendors, and they have all these things that they offer to your city. They try to sell you services for the police, and, you know, the, the
LPRs.
Yeah, the LPRs, the cameras for the police, and they had, so they already had talked to our chief and deputy chief, and, you know, so there was people that have already been connected to our city manager, or clerk, or whatever it may be, but it gave us ideas on things that we don't have in Orange City, that we may wanna bring to Orange City. And so this video kinda gives a little bit about, can we do this, Kaylee, or is it okay? Counsel, are you okay with me doing this?
Sure.
It's just a short video about why it's important that we spend this money to go get this training at the League of Cities. And this is the mayor from Cocoa, and they call him Hot Chocolate. He's so cool.
He's so funny.
If we get sound.
If you look up top, right there.
98, and that was I got involved with public service through my father. He was an elected official for 40 consecutive years at Rockledge Council. I ran on a position for myself for the great city of Cocoa. I'm happy to say, as a councilman back in 1998. And that was the first time I had the opportunity to engage with the Florida League of Cities in meeting other elected officials. My first impression about the Florida League of Cities is family. The word that comes to mind is the family, 'cause of the chores and details that everyone has to do as a family to make it overall a success. I'm happy to say that through the commitment and dedication of the League, and how it inspired me, it was very beneficial for me. And I'm happy to say, I'm a living product of the League, and I stand with the League. The Florida City Jobs give individuals the opportunity to seek employment throughout municipalities statewide. This will enhance the overall growth and development for the great state of Florida, and I strongly believe in this. Just the hearts that you touch, but to be a part of something, associated with something. That's what I live about, Florida City Jobs. FLC scholarships, it brings joy to my heart and a smile on my face. The reason why an individual can continue on with their education, that could be a great public servant for the people, by the people, because we are the people. The scholarship is a committee that was established through the League. I'm happy to say, part of our initiative. So it's important that we invest in education, and the citizens that wanna partake in this event through education. I think it's imperative and important that the citizens be made aware of what's taking place. We are that, that baton that we take from Capitol Hill, our state capitol, to our local communities, so that they'll know what is taking place, and they'll know their rights. They have representation there through our Florida League of Cities. The most important thing, you must communicate, and as elected officials, you must listen, because sometimes the answer is right there in the room, but that's where teamwork makes the dream work. I know it's important that you have that collaboration with the Florida League of Cities. This organization stands for over 100-plus years, and you have not faltered or altered from showing commitment and dedication what's best for local government. My love for the League is unwavering, and I stand proud as a humble servant who had the opportunity to be a part of the greatest scheme of the great state of Florida. I wanna, first of all, thank the citizens of Cocoa for giving me the opportunity to be their elected officials. I'm a strong believer in community, unity in the community. I wanna thank my father, my family, my faith, and my friends. I wanna thank the League for believing in me, for giving me the opportunity to display my skills and talents of leadership and commitment. We must work together, because there's power in numbers when we work together. And we honor a common goal, and that is the citizens come first when we represent our community, because local voices are making local choices. Biba la League.
He is so good. So my point of showing this was that he said, they work as a team, they work in, you can move things with numbers, and I feel like that's what we're doing up here, is we're working as a team. We're trying to make the right choices for the residents, and we're just people, too, right? But we, we're doing the best we can up here with what we have to work with, and going to this conference really helps to grow our education, right, of being on the council. So, I just wanted to share that with everybody, and...
I'd like to add, too, that I liked his, his message about communicating with the people and transparency, and, but also listening to, to our constituents. We don't have to agree with what they're saying, but sometimes what they're saying has some value, and I think that's important. So that was a good lesson I took away from that, and want to continue that, and would like to see us all continue that.
And one more thing, we're gonna do State of the City with the Land Chamber on September 24th at John Knox Village. If anybody would like to attend that, they would have to pre-register online through the, the Land Chamber to do that. You have to pre-register to get into John Knox, and there'll be a State of the City address. With that, just need a motion to adjourn.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a, a motion to adjourn.
A second.
We got a motion, we got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None oppose? Meeting adjourned.